Audience, are you all ready?
Yes.
And it's rock and roll. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. This is the zoning board of adjustments meeting for March 6, 2023. And it is Monday, and it's by my phone, it's 1:31 PM. And I'm gonna call the meeting to order and establish a forum, which we have. And that was item number one. Item number two, review and take any actions related to the minute records of the regular meeting held on Monday, January 9, 2023. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? None, there being none, let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes for January 9 of 2023 are approved officially. Item number three, ZBA 23-03, Avenue H, Kenwood Drive, Montecito Drive, single member district, number five. Karen Hessie Smith, request for approval of a variance from section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to approve a variance on triple frontage lots to allow a 10-foot setback instead of the required 25 feet on the frontage off Kenwood Drive, single-family RS1 zoning district. That being read into the minutes. Who's gonna present?
Aye.
Step right up to you. You're not going to the podium today?
Can we sit down here?
Good with everybody else, I think.
They seemed to work real well last night. Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Go right ahead, Cheryl.
Sherri Bailey, senior planner. As you indicated, this is a request on West Avenue H and Kenwood and Montecito. You can see on the map in front of you, the two and a half lots that are in red. Those are the lots that are being combined into a new plat for those areas. As you indicated, this is District 5, Karen Hessie's district. It is .463 acres, Saturita neighborhood, single-family residence, RS1. And again, this is one of the older neighborhoods in the city. It has homes from the '30s and the '40s and the '50s and the '60s, and then quite a few newer homes that have been built on individual lots, very similar to what our applicant is wanting to do. We did notify everybody within a 200-foot radius. At the time that I did this screen, we had sent out 32 notifications. I had one response in opposition, and I had three phone calls that were in support, but that is all that I had. And we haven't received the mail today, so I don't know if there are any more that are...
You said three phone calls in support and one in opposition?
Yes, yeah. The applicant is requesting to take the setback that is on the Kenwood, which is the longest of the west side of the property, to a 10-foot setback. Just for your information, it already has an eight-foot right-of-way, and so they would be asking to go to 10 feet, so it would be 18 feet ultimately when the house would be or the edge of the house could be. As I said, the applicant is combining, this is an area that's an RS1 area. It's immediately adjacent to an R2 area, which is on the other half of that block, and continues on for a number of blocks to the east. I did this one because I wanted to give you a perspective, because this is an older neighborhood. It is part of the area that has always met the front setbacks, but then the side setbacks on the corner lots were usually came in at five or sometimes eight or 10 feet when they were built back in the '50s and the '60s. We really did not have the 25-foot, and the design of the blocks was not with that kind of two-front yard setbacks. So we have had, to those of you that have been here for a while, we have had a number of variances that have been granted on that second side. Because if you look at the houses in that whole general area, you'll see that most of them on the second setback are between five to 10 feet. Some of them go on at the one, category of category from this property is 18, but the one across the street is 11, and the one that is directly across the street only has three feet to the property line on the side setback. The red line that is on the property that the applicant is applying for is the visibility triangle that we require. That is 30 feet measured along the curbside, and then a line is drawn connecting those two points. The applicant architect is aware of that, and on the plans, he has identified that visibility triangle. The green dot that you see on there is the dot that accommodates the 25-foot front yard setback and accommodates the 10-foot side setback. And so that gives you an idea of where the furthest that the side of the home could be.
Sherri, do you have a point? Were you pointing when you were talking?
Sure, let me go back.
I'm kinda slow.
All right.
Need things to be pointed to me.
I hear it's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, right? That's an 18-foot?
It's 18, 10-foot in the right-of-way, or eight-foot in the right-of-way, and then the 10-foot that she's asking for, so the house could not start before that 18-foot setback level.
18 is where the green dot is at?
It is where the green dot is, and that's also where the 25-foot setback from the front yard would be.
Oh, okay.
All right?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a copy of the plat. And looking at the analysis, as I've already discussed, this is the Saturita area. It's an older, nice-developed area for town. And this request would accommodate what has occurred already in the rest of the property, except she's combining two and a half lots. If you're familiar with Saturita at all, you know that a lot of the homes have taken property from one side or the other. They've combined to make larger lots quite often, and so this is in keeping with the normal for that area. The second setback, as I indicated, is 25 feet. That is a newer concept that came in later in the zoning ordinance, and it was developed as a guideline for the newer developed housing groups that were being built. And it has caused a significant problem whenever we're doing infill in an older area. The special circumstances in this case are it is not necessarily a direct cause of the applicant, because those are very narrow lots. They are 50-foot lots, and so it's not uncommon, as I said, for people to buy a half of another lot. People on the east of her property, and I don't know how else to identify it as the newer white home that's there, bought half of the lot when they built back in 2018, and she then bought the other half. Excuse me. And then when the lot in the back came open, she wanted to purchase that also to build into that. In this case, literal interpretation would deprive the applicant of the rights enjoyed by others while creating an undue hardship for the applicant. And this action is the minimum that will meet the needs and does not adversely affect others. This is a footprint of her house, and it's just at the planning stage right now. But we did ask, and her architect was very nice to provide us with a footprint that gives the general layout of what he's talking about for the house. And then I believe that there will be a fence that will also go along with that house. But as I indicated, it's hard to see on there, but he has taken into consideration and drawn at both corners the visibility triangle to keep that in place.
The architect did that?
Pardon?
The architect did the drawing, the line of sight?
Yes, yes, he did.
What formula did he use, do you know?
I have no idea. I didn't talk to him about that. We just asked him, and he said he was working on it, and he could send us what he had. And then this is a general footprint of the house that the applicant is thinking about. And again, it's just at the beginning stages, but it gives you an idea of the fence of the house and the area that she is talking about. And again, granting the variance will be generally consistent with the purposes and intent of this zoning ordinance, section 104.2. And in there, the zoning ordinance states that the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the character and establish pattern of development in each area. We believe that that is consistent in this case. We went with the allowed variance of literal enforcement, in that the applicant believes that their request is in keeping with the development of the homes in the older area of this town, area of town. And staff recommendation is approval of the request to allow for the side street setback of 10 feet in lieu of the required 25-foot setback in order to build a home on those two and a half lots. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any more questions?
Can you go back to the, one of the maps or something? One of your pictures? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what it is that we're talking about. So the issue is the, the part on Kenwood?
It is the part on Kenwood.
Okay, just making sure, it's not the other streets?
No, it is the part on Kenwood.
So instead of going the 25 feet in on the Kenwood side, they're just asking basically to go into the 18 feet?
Well, she's actually asking to go with 10. The 18 uses the measurement of the right-of-way, which is eight feet, and then the 10 feet also that she is asking for.
So the red line should connect with the green dot?
The red line is the visibility triangle. I was just trying to show that everything would be out of that visibility triangle area, so there would not, should not be any concern from traffic turning down Kenwood. The applicant is here, and I believe there are others that also...
Yeah, I'm waiting to see. More questions? Any more questions for Sherri? More? I have a question. Can you go back to the plat, back up to the...
Sure.
Plat?
He?
I'm too far.
whichever way I have to go.
Right there. Says lot. Is that Lot 16, Lot 31? So the land behind...
She has purchased...
That is also Lot 16?
1G.
Yeah, this is the new plat, Gary. So the lot...
It's all going to 1G, okay.
Okay.
So overall, that's the whole?
Overall, that reflects the two and a half acres, or two and a half lots, yes.
And still keep the 25-foot building line on the back there, I guess?
Yes.
Yeah, because the way that it showed, that would be where the garage parking would be, that backs up to Montecito. And then the house that the neighbor had, they both would face.
So it's gonna be Lot 1G, okay? All right. Okay, any more questions for Sherri? Thank you, Sherri.
You bet.
All right. Public here, where it's time for public comment. Anyone like to get up and talk to us and visit with us and tell us what you're gonna do?
Good afternoon, I'm Jack Downey with SKG Engineering.
Hello, Jack.
Answer any questions that y'all have, whatever. We think that this is something that's gonna enhance the neighborhood as opposed to be a distraction from it. She has an architect hired, as you know, and they just began working on this project. So we think it's gonna be something that's gonna enhance the neighborhood as opposed to the vacant lots that are here.
Okay. Any questions for Jack? Let's move on. Okay, any board comments for a call for a vote?
We got some more comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Maureen Supisi, and I live at 710 Montecito, which is directly across from this property. So it looks like I will be possibly facing maybe the garage area. So I have lived here for 17 years, and I have looked at this empty lot for way too long. So if somebody is willing to come and it looks like build an amazing home on this property, I think that is just wonderful for our community. It looks like on my side, I won't be affected by this variance, but if I was, I would absolutely support it even on my side of Montecito. I have no issue with that whatsoever, and I do think that this is a wonderful project. And I understand with the, I mean, it's just a very narrow lot, and I think if, you know, she weren't able to do this, I think she'd have to hack into so much of this, you know, of the land, I really don't know honestly what she'd be able to build there. So I just think that this is a wonderful thing for the area and something I think that is exciting to see, so I hope that you all approve this.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Ann West, and we own the lot to the east of this and built the house back there three years ago. And so we've been dealing with the vacant lot all this time on both sides and are very excited at the prospect of a house being built there. Somehow, we didn't get a notice of this, but we got a lot of phone calls from folks wanting to know what was going on when the sign went up. Anyway, and everybody that I talked to was perfectly fine with it. They were excited also at the fact of not having a lot, just a vacant lot in that neighborhood, because it is a really pretty, pretty vintage old neighborhood. It's wonderful. So anyway, we're very much in favor of it.
Thank you.
Well, I'm really glad that I get to see two of my neighbors. I think that's awesome. I live in the second house from the corner on Kenwood. I bought my house, I'm Liz Landers.
I live.
Not that that means a thing, but I bought my house about a year ago and have spent most of my time, I worked in the film industry and I retired, and I bought this house because I love it, and I knew that something would go across the street. My concern is that I'm really the only person that faces this. I have a house that's a rental on one side and an empty house that's for sale on the other side, which, you know, whoever's buying that has no say, so I kinda feel like, and they will also face that. My concern is that I love my front porch, and it's really the reason I bought the house. You can't tell, because I spent a fortune on landscaping last year, that I'm about to go redo. I know I may not be the only person who, their whole yard died last year, but I just wasn't here to see about it. So we're about to start again tomorrow. But my concern is that I don't, you know, I wanna be certain that this is going to look like, you know, that the setback is not gonna affect me adversely should I decide to sell my house again. I do feel like that I've followed the rules and have had to follow the rules. I mean, I want to. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not completely comfortable with this, because I am gonna look at it every day in my retirement. So I hope it's going to be something that I love. But I am concerned that it's gonna be so close that I won't even have a choice. So that's my thing, is that if, you know, if anything I do, I have to get permission, and that's why you guys are here. So I hope you will consider the fact that there are some of us who may be adversely affected by this, and it's not the final plan. So until you see the final plan, I don't know how you could, or how I could feel one way or the other about it. But I would like to be a great neighbor. I do love being there. I love the community. I love financial value, and I would just hope that y'all would consider this further and see the final plans and let us, or, you know, the people that are affected, see the final plans before a decision is made. I do not think that 10 feet is a good idea. I think it should be more than that. That is my opinion, but I think that my, my house is 25 feet back, I'm pretty sure. I don't know, maybe I should go measure when I get home, but I'm pretty sure mine is 25 feet back. And the whole charm and beauty of our neighborhood is that we all walk our dogs, and we walk and we look and, and sit on our front porches and visit with our neighbors. But I'm just concerned that that would just be a wall for me. So, anyway, that's my...
Don't leave the podium there. Could you back up the screen to where the...
I've looked.
Where's that one?
Where we can see where she lives?
Oh.
Oh, sure. Let me go get screen.
I know, now you're only gonna make me measure my house. No, I know, I'm pretty sure I have 25 feet, so...
What does my guess mean? Doesn't look like where we were at. Can we see your house in that one?
Okay, the red star is next door to me. I am between two houses. There are only three houses in that block of Kenwood on that side, and then there's the church on the corner, which I'm sure they don't care. I mean, I don't know, I haven't asked them, but it wouldn't affect them the way it might me.
Can you go to the architecture drawing of the elevation?
Is that over there?
That one starts there. Yeah, it looks like they're gonna need more of those. It's gonna be pushed a little bit.
Now, the one fact that I do need to revise before, because this is a narrow, deep, in this case particularly, because she's bought the lot behind, but if all of them would have had their house facing off of West Avenue H, which would mean that the side yard would be on Kenwood, in almost every case, you're going to have a fence along that Kenwood side going to the back to impose the back. That's just the normal in that entire area.
Is there any more drawings?
No, that's all I have in here. And again, it's because really, the ordinance doesn't allow you to make a determination on the design of the house. It's strictly the original address.
Is there a, I know that somewhere on this thing, you said that anything in the front yard had to be a three-foot fence up to a certain point, right? Where does that, where was, is there a restriction to where the fence will start?
Normally, if it's out of that facility triangle according to mark orders, then the fence can go up, and you'll see it all over town where that fence does go up. But that's generally behind the front setback of the house.
And we don't have an idea where the fence is starting on this one?
Um, well, so...
I'm just curious.
All of those side fences, you just can't see it from the street.
So Liz, here's the one with the, second one in from that corner.
I'm the second one in, and I would really not wanna see a privacy fence across the street.
Yeah.
That would be very...
But without knowing.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I would, that's so close to the street that if it were decided to do that, and, you know, the next owner may wanna do something different, and I, you know, I just feel like that looking into the future, which we don't have a choice, I mean, that's the whole point, is looking at what it could be and what might happen to those of us that are across the street.
The only thing unfortunate about that is there's no possible way to build it to face Kenwood because of the way that the lot is built. There's, even if anyone were to try to...
Well, it shows the front door as being facing Kenwood. That's what I was looking at, which I would be very hesitant...
No, it's gonna be facing West Avenue H, so the whole side of the house will be facing Kenwood.
Yeah, so I would, and if that's the case, I would definitely not want that variance permitted, because even if it is a setback, I would want, I would want the full setback because I would not wanna be looking at, you know, across the street a fence.
Yeah, that's just the way...
I mean, at a privacy fence, which could be.
So is the front of your house facing west?
No, it faces...
No, it faces east.
East, okay.
I do know that. I get beautiful morning sun in my front.
There's just no other way to build any type of property based on the way that that lot is surveyed out.
So that was not true, that the front door will not be facing west?
The front door will be facing West Avenue H.
Yeah. Okay, well then, I totally object, I would have to. I just, I mean, that would be not very pleasant. I mean, I just would want as much space as I could get between that house and my front porch and what's legally, you know, is required at this time. So in that case, I would ask that y'all please vote against the variance. We appreciate it.
And thank y'all very much, and I hope not to bother y'all again.
No, anytime, that's your right, you can do this. Okay? One more.
Debbie, shorter, Debbie Grissom. And I'm on the lots and appreciate the concerns and also the help and how great y'all have been with helping me figure this out, because it is a narrow, different sort of situation. In the first place, you know, we figured out rapidly that we needed to have the Avenue H entrance, and we're trying to get in the middle and make it pretty for all of us all the way around. I'm certainly not gonna have a fence, 14-foot fence down the entire Kenwood side. I will have a lot of fence there because of the way my house has to sit, but it will be, will have holes in it, there'll be landscaping, lanterns, it's not going to be just a blank, ugly wall there. So we'll do some creative, the architects are already drawing some ideas about making the fence more interesting and the lighting and landscape and all, and I think it'll soften it considerably.
So I'm sorry, did I catch, you're the owner?
Yes.
Okay, and you're gonna live there, build it, live there?
Yes, it's just me.
You mean your neighbor? Liz, I live.
Yes.
The other neighbors over there?
But anyway, no, and it's one story, by the way.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be beautiful by the architect.
Well, thank you. No, they're just, the Beasley's had that north lot, and they were close friends of mine, and they offered it after Hank passed away, and I just thought, well, we'll do that, and maybe it'll make me a little, you know, something easier to do, because it was complicated, the way the lots arranged and how narrow it is. So we're doing the best we can. We have some great people in Dallas helping us, and I promise it'll be pretty and landscaped well and lit well, and we appreciate your help, because this will be a new experience for me. And thank y'all.
Yes, thank you. Any more public comment before I close public comment? All right, moving on here down the checklist. All right, let's have the board have some comments here on it now. Any board comments?
I agree with what was said about the lot being so long that, you know, it's gonna have to have the fence, it's gonna have to have a setback, but it doesn't have to be ugly. And I know that Ms. Grissom will have it where it's very attractive and it will look good.
I agree. I'm familiar with that lot and the way it's split up, and there's no other way to build on that.
Stephanie, Bobby?
No, answered my question. I'm good.
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, the board has made their comments. I really have no comment on it. I really have no comment on it. Neighbors not wanting to get along or something go on there, that happens all the time. It's kind of always amazing when neighbors that don't know neighbors anymore, like, that's, that's always interesting to me. I blame it on a lot of things. I blame it on rear entry garages and all kinds of, kinds of, kinds of stuff and, you know, but, so, yeah, that's just kind of a opinion. All right, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And there's a second, we'll go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Passes six zero, seven zero. All right, item number four. Now we'll go, now we'll go to six zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Handy has to refuse herself or that should last the entire-
Is that, do I need to read that? In the minutes, Ms. Handy needs to refuse herself on the next item? Did I just do that?
Thank you.
You can't do that. You just do it too. That's two.
You're the man in charge.
All right, item number four, ZBA 23-04, Prycer Street and North Marie Street, single member district number three, Harry Thomas, a request seeking approval of a variance on double frontage lots from section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to allow for a 10-foot front yard building setback in lieu of the required 25-foot on the second frontage setback on a corner property. All right, and who's going to present this?
I am.
Well, Ray.
Hi, this is Rayline Berry, planner. And like you said, this is on the corner of, is it Purser, Presser and Marie, District Three, Harry Thomas. It's a Fort Concho East neighborhood, RS1, single family. This is the original, oh wait, I have proposed. Oh wait, this is the proposed plat, I'm sorry. They are cutting it into three lots and the request is for a 10-foot setback on the side of Marie for both 12A and 12B. See, those are pictures, so the one on the right is at the corner of Presser and Marie. Looking down, that's where the setback would be. So, I just wanted to show a little bit more of, rather than the one big lot, it is now three lots or will be. We sent out 23 notices. We have not received any in support or opposition. So, even though the request is for 10-foot a setback, staff is recommending 15-foot simply because, I'm going to go back, sorry. The, we're, we're a little hesitant because the driveway on the, the bottom portion, we're afraid that they may put a fence or there may be some site issues for the top lot or the, or the bottom lot if they put a fence on the side there. So we're, we are recommending 15-foot instead of 10, but the way that it is configured, there are similar homes around the area that also have a setback that is not 25-footed, is less. Let's see, what else was there? We, we're just, again, we're recommending the 15-foot because of the distraction or hindrance in the yard and there would be an adverse effect, we feel, again, because of that. And it protects the character and established pattern. Like I said, the, around that area, there are other houses that have a smaller setback. So we are recommending the 15-foot for both of those lots, 12A and B, instead of the 10-foot that they are requesting.
And those are the 50-foot ones?
Oh, and I will say that that front lot on the corner there, it is the double frontage. That is the reason why we're doing the, the setback of 15 instead of 25.
So those are 190-feet-deep lots over there? That's even.
I know.
That's why they used to do them, 190 used to be kind of the standard. What is that?
Yeah.
190?
Yeah.
You're correct.
That is correct, yeah.
Thought I'm dating myself. And when that was put in, there wasn't any setback requirements, was there? So, I guess I've kind of gotten confused. I know the side setback, that 12B, how many lots are we dealing with there?
Three.
Three, okay. Which one are they building on? Which one?
All three. They're going to build three houses.
Gotcha.
But you're only asking for it on 12B?
12A and 12B. They really want it on 12A because of the double frontage. And staff does not like 12B being required the 25-foot with 12A being 10-foot and there might, again, there might be site issues if they're allowed to build a fence or, or some type of thing on 12A. And, and so we are requesting that they be made the same setback and we are requesting 15 instead of 10, but they are wanting, the applicant is wanting 10.
Well, what you're saying is 12B corners into an alley.
Correct.
12A corners into two streets.
Correct.
Well, what, I'm sorry.
Go back to the aerial and you can explain it. Go back to the overhead aerial of the alley.
I'm sorry. That's right, even when I went out there and looked around, I was still confused about where they're building what.
Is this how you do it? Yeah. So, they are wanting it really right here.
Well, with there being an alley behind 12B, there shouldn't be a requirement for a 25-foot setback there anyway. There's an alley behind it.
Well, it would be the front setback in that case.
Marie's going to be the front. Marie's going to be the front of the house on 12B.
Okay, so they're taking 100, they're dividing, okay, I got you.
Right. So it'll be 100 by 90 foot on that lot.
I see. I see. Is there a plan for A?
Like a house plan?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, there's going to be a house on all three.
On all three?
You want to do 15 feet on those two?
Yeah.
Even for the front of the house for Marie?
Just all the way down Marie is what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yes.
So it'll be the side yard for the front one and the front yard for the back one?
Correct.
It's going to be a big hot on that last one.
And the applicant is here.
Would the applicant like to comment?
Go ahead, Jack. You can, you want to start?
Good afternoon, thank you for here in our face again. I'm Jack with SKG Engineering. The reason we're asking for the 10-foot, you have a 50-foot wide lot. If you take 15 off the side and you have five off the other side, taking 20 feet off the lot, you're going to have a narrow house, 30 feet, the maximum width. We understand the staff's concern about the, the clearance. If you're backing out of 12B or driving out of 12B and looking at traffic and trying to make clearance, but we feel like we have a wide enough lot, the 12B being 90 feet wide, we can put the driveway either in the access through the alley or near the alley so that you have plenty of clearance there. When you look at the other houses on Marie, they either face Harris, I think there's one house that faces Harris, has a carport on Marie, there's another house that faces Marie. So we don't think there's a lot of traffic because this is not a through street. This is just a couple of blocks long. We don't have a lot of traffic driving through there in the first place and so we just think that that's the best solution for this. It gives the client the multiple, our best possibility of building a house that's suitable for the neighborhood and presents it well. We also would mention that the building setback line does not affect the fence, so even if we set the house back 15 feet, they might build a six-foot fence right up to the property line and it would still create the same problem as if you had a house 10 feet back.
So Jack, 12B, they're going to open it up to Marie Street?
To Marie, yes sir.
And that's going to be on a 10-foot building line?
Well, we kind of did that at staff's recommendation because they wanted that building line to be the same, but we want to set the house further back. Their concern was visibility and again, our, our concern is, is more safety of the person exiting or entering the driveway, being able to clear that. And so we think that, that clears that as well. We've got an alley on the other side, so the house has plenty of, of clearance as far as visibility for the house itself.
It's interesting. You're going to walk in with building line, my shat one down. I don't remember that shat. Why, why wouldn't you try, is this for Galileo's supposed?
Yes.
And why wouldn't you try to get two lots out of 12B facing?
Why would we what?
Why wouldn't we want to try to get two lots facing Marie Street on 12B?
Because if I split 90 in half, that's only 45 and I have my private setbacks, that makes for very tight houses. Most of my houses are going to be, they fit very nicely on 50-foot lots, so if I, so with 12A, we're going to have to tweak our floor plan even to shrink it enough to fit with a 10-foot setback because it's only a 50-foot lot, so 10-foot on one side and five on the other are down to 35.
We might give you a variance on something, but, okay, I'm with you. But I, one lot, people taking care of it, that's something that big, that's always seems to be a problem.
And we do have a floor plan that has a garage in the back, so we can use the alley for Marie to turn into the driveway so that when they come out, they're already facing Marie, therefore they have a good sight line already. And it's 90 feet before you even hit the fence, you know, so you should have enough visibility, clearance with the 10-foot setback on the side to be able to, to see any traffic, but it's a dead end. If you look at the aerial, Marie dead ends. So there's not a lot of through traffic right there.
Yeah, I agree with the 15 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, because 15 feet is going to make the other two lots too small.
Yeah, I was just thinking about building that, I'd say it was setback anyway. Okay, no problem. Any more questions for the applicants from the board? No? None? We're close, bud. Any more public comment? Billy?
Good.
All right. Let's close public comment and go to the board comments. Any comments from the board? There'd be none. Let's ask for a motion. Or I'll ask for a motion.
I think make a motion to approve 10 feet.
Okay? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All right, we have a second, we'll go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six zero. Thank you. Good luck.
I heard you leaning forward, saying tie off, sorry.
All right, division report, item number five.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, Planning Services Manager. Just a few things. We are currently have an applicant pool we are going to be selecting from and conducting interviews to hopefully fill staff, the new planner. See, maybe seeing a new face here shortly. We are also working on some ordinance amendments, those that would affect you, just a few would be fencing, setbacks and eventually, you know, as they come forward, mobile food units, et cetera, et cetera, but other things that affect just planning in general, ordinance amendments that staff is going to be bringing forward in months to come, hopefully to streamline and make things easier for applicants, make it an easier development process. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, item number six, public comment. Issues or concern not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dice and begin by stating their name and address or single member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. No grats? Okay. No praises? Hallelujah. All right. Let's see, before I go to the next meeting agenda, I would like to welcome a new board member, Terry Jackson. Welcome, Terry.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for joining this fine board of ours.
Yes, sir.
We meet at Blaine's after this.
The after meeting?
The after meeting. We've got to break you in.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Okay, item number seven is the next meeting agenda. Next meeting of ZBA is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, April 3rd in the City Hall East Mesmering Meeting Room. Is there anything on the agenda for April 3rd yet?
I don't believe so at this point, but it's early.
My email changed. Okay. All right. Please. Item number seven, motion to adjourn. Do I hear a motion and a second and all the good stuff?
Motion to adjourn.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.